And I think that's printed at the door, too, if anyone needs that. If you are a visitor, if you could sign in, if you haven't done that, that would be great. And then we'll have an approval of agenda unless there's a change to be made to that. No changes? Okay. If not, a motion to approve?
So what?
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been brought to our attention that the packet was not put online this month. Due to open meeting laws, it doesn't technically have to be. We're still legal. That was an oversight that will get remedied going forward. It is also, we're not going to take action on, the public hearing was properly noticed in the paper and everything, and all, everyone got public notice on that, so that we're fine on. The, and we're technically fine on everything, but the discussion items, the sign ordinance and the lot splits, we're gonna just do discussion tonight, if that's fine with the group, and not give any direction, or we're just gonna have discussion and come back to them next month. And then that way, there will be no concerns about that posting, if that makes sense to, and is agreeable by the group. Is that fine with staff?
Yeah.
Is that fine with everybody here? Okay. If not, do we have a motion to, we have a motion. Do we need a vote now, or did we get a motion?
We did.
You did, so we need a vote. Yep, that's what I thought. Do we have, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Then we'll go to, I would assume Clara for our public hearing? Or minutes, sorry. All these things happen in the last 10 minutes. It's like, we're gonna do this now. Okay, we have minutes from May 22nd. Do we have any comments on those?
Offer a motion to approve minutes?
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. And now we'll move on to Clara and the public hearing.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. Thank you for being here. We do have one public hearing tonight. It is on a variance request for a home on Stanton Avenue, and we do have the applicants with us in the audience, should you have any questions for them about their project. The inhabitants at 647 West Stanton Avenue currently have a shed in the back one-third of their lot. They are proposing to take that down and put up a garage. Stanton Avenue is a, that, that whole neighborhood down there is a very old section of Fergus Falls. Therefore, plating and things like that took place before the city had a zoning code in place. So if a lot is smaller than the normal size of what we say in our zoning code now, it needs to be there for either a single-family home or a multifamily home. We will grandfather them in and call that a legally non-conforming lot. So this is a small lot, and they are asking to go beyond the 10% footprint that we voted into city code back in, I believe, 2021. It will not, it will not mess with the character of the neighborhood overall, because there are lots on either side that are much larger than the one in question here. And they will be taking down the old one and replacing it completely, so they won't have multiple structures on their site. So in your packet, you have information about the legal requirements that are met for variances. We answer all of the questions there, but if you have any further discussion that you'd like to have tonight, we could have that now. Otherwise, if you have questions about the project, we can turn to the applicants.
Any questions for Clara?
Yeah, I just have one question. What was the original idea behind 10% of a lot? Back, way back, if you, if you know?
Well, that's a good question. Laurel might remember better than I do.
I think it had to do with people not building, like, their whole grounds. Like, I mean, it, I think it came down to, we wanted green space. And I don't know, I know we looked at multiple different ones and compared, but I don't know how it landed exactly at 10. I think we were trying to give people as much flexibility as possible, is my memory. That tends to be the trend of this group, at least while I've been on it, that we're trying to be as least restrictive.
When the requirements changed, the, the, the initial language was that it had to be in the, the back one-third of your lot. It wa, it was pretty restrictive language, and so loosening it to this 10%, not restricting it to the one-third, people can kind of choose where in their lot they're putting it, made it a little bit easier for people to feel like they could make their own choices about where they're putting their, their structures.
So it had nothing to do with, like, impervious surfaces or anything like that?
No.
From, you know?
No.
No.
Okay.
And it also gave people, like, looking at the topography of people's lots, a lot of times the side yard, we were getting all kinds of side yard requests.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just variance request after variance request after variance request to put accessory structures in side yards. And it came down to a ton of staff time was being spent on it, too, because it was like, every month we'd have a variance request and...
Yeah, and there are a lot of lots in Fergus Falls that kind of require for a structure to be in a side lot. Like, if you're driving down past the old high school, there, that hill goes right to the back of a lot of those houses. They would have to ask for a variance to put a structure in their side yard, even though that's literally the only place they had to put it. So we continue to restrict, you can't put them in your front yard unless you're on a lake lot. That's, that's different, actually. But if you're in town, we still say, not in your front yard, but you have more flexibility to the back, to the side.
Right.
Good question, though. Thank you.
Any other questions for Clara? Okay, if not, we'll...
I do have a question, yeah. What's the typical setback from the road right of way in, in an R4 district? I'm just, I'm noting that...
For a front yard?
In the backyard. I mean, I'm noticing they're six feet off the road right of way. I just have a question, and, you know, it's, the rectangle runs north to south. They're putting their rectangle east to west. It's just a...
Is it five?
I think it's five.
Okay.
Yeah. Mark is checking for sure.
It's three feet off the parcel line.
There we go.
Okay.
The side yard.
Okay.
R4 is the least restrictive for setbacks, right? For, for back and side?
For residential.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's five feet to an RA, R1.
Okay. That was my primary concern.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, we will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Dana Hallen. My address is 505 West Summit. It's my daughter's property, or our property, and we just want to put a garage up. That's in the backyard, so...
Any questions for the applicants? Okay. I think your night's gonna be pretty easy tonight.
I hope so. We just want, we need off-street parking.
Right.
So...
And the city appreciates people taking off-street parking, the legal way to get it, so that's all good. Okay, we'll bring it back. We'll close the public hearing if no one else would like to speak. Okay, if we have more discussion here or a motion to entertain?
I'll do a motion to approve this.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes? We are not the final yes or no. It goes to city council, and so the staff will be in contact with you, or you can follow that process. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to sign ordinance talk. I assume that's Clara, but I don't know for sure.
All right, I'm back. So, we have been talking for the last couple meetings about our city code on signs. We had discussed initially just the fact that we wanted to talk about making some changes. Staff brought forward some recommendations of other communities that we could look at. And at the last meeting, it was decided that the sign code that is from Hopkins was recognized as a good, a good language base from which we could start and turn it into something that works for Fergus Falls. So what you have in front of you in your packets tonight is, is a first draft of what some of those changes could look like. Just kind of high level, what, what has been discussed and what went into these sign change, or sign code changes were inclusion of definitions of types of signs and different terminology that relate to signage, which we did not have before. Language that clarifies when a sign permit is necessary, as well as exemptions to those rules, which again, we did not have as part of our code before. The addition of language regarding window signage, because we do have a lot of businesses in town that choose to utilize that real estate right on the front of their building with their window signage. Again, not language that we had included initially in our sign code, and we would get tons of questions about that all the time from people who were trying to make applications. And then, just for clarity's sake, including tables in our code that lay out your zone and then the rules that relate to that zone, so just making it overall a little bit easier to navigate the sign code. So we've taken a first crack at that. And then, based on discussion from our last meeting, we also included language for seasonal signage and then clarification of the rules and roles that are surrounding temporary signage and signage that's related to community events. So that's its own standalone section at this point. And again, this is a first draft, so attorneys in the room, if you're seeing things that maybe you want to take a look at in some of this new language, that would be much appreciated. And then, like I said, just kind of an overall cleanup of the code and just making it a little bit easier for us to navigate, both from a staff perspective and then from an applicant's perspective when they're looking at our rules and, and how to apply that to their projects. A piece that we had discussed at the last meeting that I have not yet included, but we can certainly still look to do so, is a language regarding exemptions for fake box retailers. So at the last meeting, Mark had shown us an example of Walmart, which is within city limits, and their signage that they have related to their business operations is a lot larger than probably what we would normally have, based on our sign code. And we know that they have corporate direction that they need to take, so finding ways that we could work with some of that corporate direction to ensure that our larger retailers are getting the signage that they need, while still fitting within some of our rules. So, that's where we are tonight.
Did we kind of mimic any other towns on the temporary and seasonal, or did we kind of start from scratch?
I kind of took what we had and just built it based on the conversation that we'd had, because I feel like we have a good understanding here of what our community groups need and are looking for. So I tried to keep it as simple as possible, but to include what we know those needs are.
So how are we, oh, go ahead.
Could you highlight the areas where there's some of the biggest changes?
Yeah, and I'm wondering if we need to look at that, like, with a list of where things are changing?
I did like a redlined version that compares the documents. It's kind of messy to look at, but we can at least try to walk through it.
Can we email that out to the group, too? So people can see that?
Yes. It wouldn't come out as a PDF, just so you know. It would be a Word document, so... I didn't send it out initially, but I can. Okay. I'm gonna try to make this bigger. Help with my keyboard is on. Um, Jill, can you try to zoom in on it? It's down in the corner. Well, let's see. Here, never mind. I'll just try to do it in this mouse there. All right. So, I removed some of the initial language that was, okay, so what you're seeing X out is from the Hopkins sign code, not our sign code. So I removed the preamble section, because it's talking about why city council thinks a sign code is necessary. I, I don't know that we need to include that. And instead, I continued to include our section just on generally what this is and saying, you know, after this code is in place, these are the rules moving forward. So that's what this section generally does. I did leave their finding purpose and effect, because it helps applicants figure out why they're applying for a sign permit in the first place. It essentially comes down to, you know, safety and aesthetics. Though I did remove some of the language. Okay. Severability, this is, I'm leaving this because this is legalese that may be important. Here's the section on definitions. I did, the red here are inclusions of definitions that Hopkins did not have, but that appear in the sign code, and I figured if they don't have definitions of it, we should at least have it. So this is from a national group that regulates signs. The language is where I pulled that from, so just explains what a billboard is. And then, they had in Hopkins a diff, a different definition of what we call electronic message centers, so like, the electronic sign you see downtown above Park Region, that's an EMC. So I just kept that same language from our old code and pulled it into this new code and gave it a definition. There are a lot of definitions of sign stuff that don't necessarily appear in the code, but are defined, so should we need to rely on them, we can. Here's the language about permitting. Again, we did not have this in our code initially, and I did change some of the language to match what we have in our current permit application. So we do ask for contractor information. We ask for a legal definition, which is essentially the lot block in addition. And they did not ask about property zoning. We do ask about property zoning, so I just updated this to kind of match what's in our current application. And then, this language, the zoning administrator shall approve or deny the sign permit in an expedited manner. This does match a lot of the language elsewhere in our city code about how responses are made to applicants and the timeline in which those responses are made, so I did keep that the same.
Can I ask you a question on the permit process?
Yes, you can.
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but then we'll come back to it. My husband and I own a property in Elizabeth, and we looked into signage on it a couple years back. It's on 59, so that's State Highway.
Okay.
I'm just reading this part about, you know, it's been approved from the state for that permit. They basically told us this is where you can put it. They gave us no permit, no nothing. Is that, has that changed? Or do they actually give permits? Because that's not what we ran into.
That's a good question, because I feel like recently we have been asked a similar question about state highways and whether or not there's a permitting process, and I don't fully know the answer to that, so...
I don't know that there is.
We can change that.
They just, I think we should, if, if there's not one, I don't think we should require it, because when you call the state and ask those questions, they basically say you have to be this far off the right of way. I mean, you, you can't have the sign overhang the right of way, but you can do...
So they give you nothing in response?
Literally, nothing. Yeah.
And state, I, so when I was kind of looking into this state statute, it did seem like there was some sort of legal requirement, but if they're not providing...
As long as it's not in the right of way. That's the trick. You know what I mean? They just, they have to make sure that you can prove where their right of way ends on your property. That's where they were at with us.
Okay, so maybe...
But this is just personal experience. I'm just, I'm hesitant to put it in there if they don't actually hand you a permit.
So maybe I just add, if the proposed sign is along State Trunk Highway or Interstate Highway, and in the...
Follow state code?
If the proposed sign is in State Trunk Highway or Interstate Highway right of way...
Well, couldn't, couldn't you just add on a comma at the end and say, "if required," or something?
Yeah, I mean, that, or, within statute, or, or something.
Yeah. And then we can just, as the permitting process is going through, if we notice, hey, you're on a state highway, do you need any kind of, did you talk to the state?
Right.
Yes or no? Okay, thank you. That makes it easy, if required.
Was it in the context of signs that we talked about a landlord or property owner joining in, in the application? In some instances, I'm trying to remember.
Yes, it is in our, it is on our application that the property owner does need to be a signatory on the permit.
Okay.
That probably should be called out here. I don't know if you say majority property owner? I mean, how do you, how does that work legally? You've got four property owners and one signs off.
We'll be looking at another draft of this, I'm sure, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead and just provide some proposed language.
Okay. And I can just take what we have in our permit now and include that language maybe in there? Yeah, we'll just start there, and then if there are further comments about it. Okay. Thank you. All right. Here's where we list the exemptions to the sign code, which again, was not something that we had before. This just makes it extra clear, you know, when people are applying. If any of these things fit with their project, they don't need to apply. How do we feel about the sign six square feet or less in size?
Can that be higher?
It could be higher, although later on in our code, what we do talk about is like directional signage in residential areas or for a hospital or a church or something cannot exceed three feet. So, for consistency's sake, I'm not entirely sure what to do here, but, so this is the Hopkins language. Thoughts?
I, I don't have strong feelings. I'm, I'm kind of wanting, as we get to a place where, like, substantively, we can agree to the language and maybe the technical pieces about how, you know, big we want the sign could come possibly in the next draft. Like, would it be possible for you to call those things out?
Yes.
And those are things we can focus on, I think, going forward yet? Unless anyone else here has strong opinions on that.
And I think on the exemption piece, I don't know if we can clarify the language a little bit on, to me, it's the changing of display surface on a painted or printed sign only. So that's like, if you have an, like, one of those plastic inserts and you're just updating your logo or whatever, is that how you...
That's, in practice, how we have been doing it, yes, is like, oh, you're just doing a, we call it just a face change. And we're not requiring, requiring a permit, unless they do not have one on the books initially.
Okay.
Which does occur sometimes.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what that was.
Yeah, so we, and maybe we can clarify that further with that language there. Again, that's just the same Hopkins language. We'll come back to the sign stuff. Electrical signs, I think this is important to leave in there. And this is something that our building official looks for when he receives the applications is, are there electrical needs and have they worked with an electrical contractor to make sure everything is safely done? Unauthorized signs. So we do in Fergus Falls currently and want to continue allowing the, what are referred to as portable signs and change, changeable copy signs. So the changeable copy signs are essentially like the black signs that you see with the letters that you slide on. Those get used a lot in town. We don't, I, I don't think want to restrict the use of those, so I removed those callouts from the section on unauthorized signs.
I think we have something contradictory in unauthorized signs. When it says all off-premise signs, if we're gonna say all off-premise signs, that's gonna start contradicting some of that.
Potentially, we could say all off-premise signs. Excluding signs covered...
The temporary sign area or something?
Yes, under temporary signage.
I just don't think we should say no to it, and then...
Which do, yeah, and the temporary signage section does clarify that if you're just a business who's like, hey, we're having a sale, we want to put this sign up, that does not count as a temporary sign. So it would restrict it to the use that I think we're all picturing, which is like nonprofit or community events. Our code does not currently call out setback information regarding signs, so I did remove this. And maybe that's something we can discuss if we need to, but I figured the fewer regulations to have to run through, the easier. This just explains to applicants how the area of the sign is defined, so we do get that question sometimes of like, do you count, do you count it in a box? Or are you counting it, like, if it's just letters, how are you doing that? So this clarifies for them, it's a certain space within which the area is considered. This explains can't be marquees and fixed awnings. This, I think, is probably helpful to leave should a new building be coming in that maybe is considering any of these things. And then, here's just a little bit of guidance on window signage.
I don't know that that matches what we talked about, because it talks about limiting the surface area, and we talked about how some people have, like, their whole logo on their whole window.
On the window signage?
Because it wasn't our conversation around, Nate, I think you're the one that brought it up.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was a proponent of not limiting the size.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, not limiting it at all, but I, there was some discussion on fixing it to the inside surface.
Right.
Okay, so not limiting... Okay. Can I make a comment on that?
Can we keep the comments until she's done, and then we'll let public speak, if that's okay? Okay.
All right, in certain zones and for certain signage, illumination is allowed. In most cases, there is language that is either restricting it from being near residential zones or saying, if you are near a residential zone, you know, please don't shine the lights. So this just kind of encapsulates that. And then, with the height section, and again, this goes back to kind of like our, the sizes and the, that discussion that I think we'll hold off on for tonight. But their height restrictions, I think, were a lot more restrictive than ours are currently, so I've amended the language in the best that I can to allow for heights beyond 35 feet. Because, I mean, if you're driving downtown, or if you're driving, you know, out toward the west end, there are a lot of signs that are much taller than the height of the building that they're in front of.
So are we getting more restrictive or less restrictive?
Less restrictive than Hopkins and not changing our restrictiveness currently.
So Fergus restrictiveness will not get more, won't get more stringent?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't want to create a situation where there's a new business coming in that could potentially be locating next to a business that's already been there, and that business gets to have a sign that's 15 feet above the height of their building, and the one next door, we don't allow to do that.
Can we specifically call out grandfathering in existing signs, so that is clear as of the date? Or have I missed that?
That is called out in another section.
Okay, but in general, not, whatever's okay now is gonna continue to be okay?
Yes. It does say if you're gonna make significant changes, like if you're gonna build a brand-new pylon and go through the whole permitting process again, then the new restrictions would apply. But if you're just gonna go in, change the face, change something about an existing sign, then you're fine. Okay. So this is my scab at, including the tables, using the information that we already currently have in our sign code, so I have not changed height restrictions, area restrictions, anything like that. Just made it more clear. Here is language about non-commercial speech, and these are the sections, excuse me, Jill. These are the sections that have been, I believe, tried in, in state courts and have withheld. So this is essentially saying, like, this, this section is based on state rules about general elections and just having signs, you know, for candidates in your yard, et cetera. Now, these, this is the section that I pulled from our original code, so I just replaced a section in the Hopkins codes. These are, these are our general provisions. And this does get into a little bit more detail about possibly some setback information, not located within fifteen feet of any property line, property line, your residence district, et cetera, just like specific rules that don't fit in a table necessarily. And then permitted signs by district. Again, we're diving into what we allow, where, um, Hopkins does not talk a lot about the illumination of signs, so I did include our own section that talks about that. Cause we do have restrictions in both directions. These are the ones not allowed in residential zoning. Business district, there are a few signs that are only allowed by conditional use. Um, we don't get a lot of requests for this kind of signage, whatever rotational and flashing signs are, we just don't get those. Um, but I left the language in just in case. But they would have to go through a CUP process in business zones. The only place where they're permitted without any sort of discussion is, oh, no, sorry, that is conditional use as well, never mind. So essentially, if you wanna put up a rotating or flashing sign without a CUP, you're out of luck. These are sections, I'm not really sure what's happening here. These I think were inclu-, I do want included. So I'm not sure why they're greened out like this, but, um, this is the.
Those are hard to read. Which ones are those?
Uh, non-conforming signs, compliance. So this is the section that talks about if you had a sign before.
So that's staying in.
Yep.
Is that on our version of this?
It should be.
If, if it's struck out here, I don't.
I don't think it is. I don't think it's carrying through to us.
Green usually means it was moved.
That, that's what I was just gonna ask too.
Possible if it was moved. Cause I did add sections in front of it, so would that have moved them?
Just trying to find words on my side.
Um, yeah.
What page are you on?
Page eighteen.
Page eighteen. So it did get in there?
It's, yeah, towards the very end, probably where it belongs.
Yeah, section one fifty-four dot one nine zero.
Okay. So should I keep scrolling through them here then?
Yep.
Okay, so I don't get too confused. Um. Substitution clause, this is more of the legalese that I, until the city attorney sees this, I think I will just leave alone. Um, dynamic signs is again what Hopkins calls our electronic message center. So I did update this section to be about electronic message centers. And I took our existing rules about that and simply plugged them in. I did take a couple of their pieces of language that I thought were good. Um, including positionings those to limit their impact on adjacent residential uses. And, um, must be located on the site of the use identified or advertised by the sign. Otherwise, these are all of our same rules. Um. I did replace the, like, our code initially had different language about how bright the signs can be. I replaced that with the Hopkins language because it seemed easier to understand and also to measure. Um, in our old code, it was, I don't know who would even do the measuring of how bright it was. Their code included having something from the manufacturer of the sign that said, it does not get brighter than X or that you can set it to these certain parameters. So then we would put that onto the applicant to say, these are the restrictions that you need to use for your sign and we have proof that your sign can do that. Does that make sense? Okay. Alright, and then here's where we get into the temporary and seasonal signs and community event signage section. Again, a lot of this is our, our same language, but I have updated it to include language about seasonal signs and to kind of explain what we believe a seasonal sign to be.
So how does it work? Like, it talks about having a, an annual sign permit. So anybody that's having like the church garage sale has to get a permit kind of thing?
Yeah, I think right now the permit amount is set at fifty dollars.
Okay.
For an annual temporary sign permit.
Okay.
I think it can be used up to seven times in a year.
Okay, how are we gonna communicate that to people? Because.
Amount of it?
Well, the fact that they need to get one because people have just been doing it.
Well, if they're putting, if they're putting it in like Triangle Park or Van Dyke Park.
Yeah, then they get one.
Then they have to get it for sure. Um, if it's an event.
To me, if it's on private property, do we really have to get a permit for it?
Um, no, so like we allow in our residential zones, if you're a realtor, for instance, like you can put up a realty sign saying, this house is for sale or this building is for rent or whatever. That does not require.
So I'm just like saying, if like someone puts a sign in the yard that's like vacation Bible school at O L V or, you know what I mean? Like.
Right.
We really gonna have them coming and permitting that?
Sign thing, no.
I think we need to clarify that. Cause the way it reads, it makes a person think all of that needs to be permitted. Cause then like when the blood mobile comes to town or whatever and they put their sandwich sign up, they don't have to get a permit, right?
Well, it depends on where they're putting it.
Okay, but I'm just thinking like stuff like that. I mean, we're gonna end up with a lot of permits coming through.
Yeah, and city council can also look at the fee amount, so that should be looked at annually and is included in the fee.
And maybe there's a nonprofit fee that we could suggest?
I think we could certainly suggest looking at that. I forget at what point of the year we look at the fee schedule, but it's coming up soon. So, I think, cause I think it runs along with the budget.
Probably.
Um, okay, yeah, so that's further clarification we can make. Is when they need to get a permit.
Yep, how would you ask her? Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, if you look at the table that you put together, thank you by the way, one fifty-four point one eight seven. It talks about the type of temporary signs you can have in a residential district. And I wonder if that's not just the better place to start.
That's a really good idea.
You know, defining how, what kind of temporary signs in those districts.
So maybe include. Okay, so is this group okay with allowing year-round just the placement of small yard signs in, on personal property to advertise for nonprofit events or community events?
Yeah, I'm personally fine with banners too, like, you know, where they have put three yard stakes in and there's a banner that's, I don't know, four feet by ten feet or, you know, I mean, I think that's okay too, in my mind, it's temporary. Are others feeling like that's okay?
And do we ensure that they are tied to, like, with our temporary sign language, they can't be up for longer than, you know, three, it can't be up for longer than three days after the event?
Oh, yeah, I think that's fine.
And then with seasonal signage, um, I think where the discussion had led us last time was four months. So that's what I've got in here. Which would encompass the entirety of, say, the farmer's market. They would be able to have temporary signage up that they don't have to go out and pull down.
So like if they, if the city approved it for the library or whatever, that could work.
Yeah, I did, have not included language that says, go ahead and lose, use the library. At this point, it still is restricted to, they would need to either place that on private property or in Van Dyke or Triangle Park.
So can we add language that through a process, I mean, can we identify a process that's through something where that can be looked at? Or is that just a no-go with the city?
I think that might be opening a can of worms, but we can certainly discuss it. Because if we're allowing one community group to do it, then it's, yeah, that's open to all of them to do.
But if they put it on the hospital, they wouldn't have to move it.
Right, with this language, technically, they would not have to.
The museum and those things, okay.
And they're the only community group I can think of that would maybe want a sign up for that long. But that's not to say that another event might pop up that they want something similar, so. We may have to reassess as, as time goes on, but I think it's a good starting place. And then we had also discussed, um, in like Triangle Park, which is a large area, maybe not restricting it to only two signs. So I left the language vague and have left it up to the city administrator's office when people are making their applications to put those signs up so that they can kind of visualize how many events are happening at once and what's gonna fit in that park. So it's not saying, nope, only two of you can do it. It's saying you can apply and then the city administrator's office will provide the permits for, you know, however long for this event and then switch it out with something else. Cause they keep a whole roster of, of what's happening when and who's applying when.
So then that makes sense for, on G, where it talks about the banner situation. I think that's probably more restrictive than maybe we intended.
G.
I mean, the city has to grant permission, but there's no permit required. I mean, like, that seems kinda like, there's no permit required, why are we granting permission?
And this is, I mean, again, this is our current language, so we do, if somebody is putting up a banner, we do generally ask, they let us know that they're doing it. And then it is only supposed to be up for two weeks.
I mean, what if we just change that to, starting with the sentence, banners are allowed to be installed on a property for a maximum of two weeks? Just to me, the notice where there's no permit needed seems like, then why are we calling?
I would maybe go the, a different direction, say we should do a permit for it. I'm just thinking of, like, okay, so let's take late till eight, for example. There was a point where, um, and this was city staff who did this, strung a banner across Lincoln Avenue. There was a windstorm, the banner broke free and could have hurt somebody or property. So like, I don't know that we wanna just allow, let people put up a banner. I think we wanna make sure that it's done safely and adhered correctly. And the best way to do that might be a permit process.
How do people feel? I mean, do you really wanna be having a permit process for anyone that wants to put a eight foot by four foot banner in their yard?
In their yards, maybe not. If it's.
I mean, I'm just like, I mean, I'm just saying like realistically, do you want that headache?
People are walking in and out underneath the banner, maybe.
Right, I mean, maybe it's a permit process in business districts.
Yeah.
And it's a two-week thing in residential. And there might be reasons in business districts, like that late till eight, the two-week thing wouldn't apply. You know, like that should be up all summer then.
Be a seasonal sign.
Right. I'm just also thinking staff time, like, we're gonna end up with so many permits and so many things that are just gonna be time sucks.
Yeah, that's true. And we do, I mean, some of this is handled by the city administrator's office with these like temporary signs and the nonprofit signs, but then the rest of the signage is elsewhere. We have to get the city building inspector involved. It's, it can be time consuming. But yeah, I think permit process for business zones makes sense, residential, two weeks. Okay. Anything further on this section?
Does it still say somewhere, real estate signs are okay?
Yeah, I think it should be up in the section on what's allowed in residential.
Okay.
Here's the non-conforming language, this is where it got moved to.
Okay, my only question on this would be number two. If we have a building that's for sale or, you know, actively being marketed, to me, if it's not being used for a year, if it's still being actively marketed, I don't know at that point that we should force it to change.
If the use of the non-conforming sign or structure is discontinued? Okay, other, any other thoughts about that? So what does that look like in reality?
I don't know, I'm like thinking like the Pizza Hut sign, like if they just took their insert out, it doesn't make sense to make them remove a ten thousand dollar structure.
Yep, you're probably right.
I just, to me, if, if the, if the building is being actively marketed for future use.
So let's take out, let's say, shall not be reconstructed except in conformity and take out the or used. And give them the option to continue.
Yeah, so I, I think the intent, uh, is where it falls into disrepair or something and, and you're not, you know. So I, I think if you remove or used, uh, then I think that fixes it.
The ones I think that we've seen is the ones where you have the structure, the sign is blown out and completely unused. Those are the ones I think that are in disrepair.
Right, and is that considered disrepair then, when it's just sitting there hollow, when there's no business?
Well, we've seen businesses that are still functioning.
That's the one, right, yeah.
And I can't even think which one it is, but.
There's one out there, but I can't think of it either.
Yep. I've driven by it a hundred times, but yeah.
Yep, but I couldn't tell you the business. I just, I don't wanna get into the point where we're ripping out perfectly good infrastructure.
Right.
For no purpose. Right.
Nope, that makes sense.
I guess my other concern in regards to that goes back to the language, and I circled it somewhere, in one fifty-four, one eighty-six, general provisions in J. Signs that may or hereafter become rotted, unsafe or unsightly, I think unsightly is a hard word to enforce.
Okay.
To me, rotted or unsafe would be one thing, but unsightly, that's kinda like the bearer, like, that's not a really good legal word in my mind, but I'm not the attorney. But like, what is unsightly? Cause what's unsightly to me might not be unsightly.
Right, maybe we just take that word out and just leave it at rotted or unsafe.
Yeah, cause if it's a safety hazard, then it goes. But to me, unsightly, I don't, I think that could be argued.
I can look at that.
Yeah, may, 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 maybe.
It's one fifty-four, one eighty-six J. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess I wouldn't concede that point, that it, that unsightly, that there's not like an objective way to look at that.
Okay.
I think, I think we all kind of would be on the same page on that.
I just think the definition.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're all thinking the same thing, but I don't know how to put it in words.
Yeah, I don't want unsightly signs either. I just don't know how to objectify it.
But I think if someone, if there was a true dispute about that, or if it was like some, some business that had an old-fashioned looking sign and that was part of the business, you know, you escalate that beyond whoever made the original decision and then it gets figured out. The, the, the contrary point would be, um, that we're letting, you know, so sort of the disrepair stuff slip through that looks like blight, you know?
Right, right.
Okay.
So some happy middle ground there. That gets across, we don't want the ugly, but yet.
Put distasteful.
That seems so much better.
Yeah.
Okay. We will look at that. We're reaching the end.
What, when the building loses its non-conforming status, all signs devoted to the structure shall be removed. What, what makes a building lose a non, I, that confused me. In six, under non-conforming.
That's a good question. I don't know if our code elsewhere explains what that would mean. The best I could think is if there's, say, a building that was built in 1961 and somebody comes in and buys it and is gonna do a major overhaul on it, at a certain point, new building codes are gonna come into play. And I think that is the point where we would say, okay, you're no longer legally non-conforming. If you're making changes to this property, to the extent that you are, you now need to fit within our zoning code as well. But I don't know that we have an exact...
I don't know that I even personally need that one in there, but that's just me. Cause I don't know if it really matches anything else. I think that's maybe Hopkins language.
We can take that out. Other comments on this section?
Uh, well, that, that first paragraph up there, that last full line. Signs are maintained so as not to be unsightly, so it's the same use of the word unsightly. But I think that gets to what we were talking about, that they're maintained, so broken glass is picked up, burnt-out light bulbs are replaced, that sort of stuff, I guess. Not been abandoned. I mean, that's, that's really, the next line really says it.
Yeah, it's more clear there. And I think, I think actively calling out, maybe, maybe adding to that sentence, something, and my wording is gonna be awful, but it's linked to the effect of due to closure of business, if the business is gonna be used for another similar purpose, the sign can remain while being marketed. Or, you know, something that calls it out, so it's clear that that is an exclusion in this situation. Cause when people look at these properties, those are 10, 15, $20,000 signs if that goes into what they're willing to pay.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know that we have any language that says, like, if you've got a big pylon sign, you have to take it down.
Right, but if Walmart, I mean, this should also help Walmart, I think, too, not, not the, for the market, but to be able to hit the big box piece. And then you're gonna add the big po- box piece, call that out somewhere?
Yeah, in some way.
And is that a conditional use permit then for a big box?
Yeah, we could do it that way. We would just have to add that conditional use language in, saying...
That if for business purposes or for business requirements? You can, corporate requirements?
I will play with some of that language with the city attorney.
I mean, granted, Joe Blow could go write corporation documents pretty quickly and think they're required.
Cause if, if we're opening up a CUP process for large retailers, then we should allow that for small retailers, which could mean that we have a lot of CUPs coming in front of this body at some point. Just, I'm just thinking of where that could go. But...
How do you allow it for big and not little?
Right.
That could also go back to make the fee big enough to make it, so not everybody wants to come do it. Cause you know, if it's mostly geared for the big guys, big guys can pay the fee. I mean, not that you wanna hurt small business either, but I think we're mostly, I think we're pretty, letting people do what they need to do, I hope. I don't think it's too restrictive.
And I think that's what we're doing, is we're doing a good job of making it not restrictive. That's what we, I think that's what we've all been doing.
Yeah.
And we've really never been accused of being too restrictive, just confusing.
Right. And I think the tables help that immensely. The only other thing I was thinking we should call out is, there, it refers to how much of the front surface area of the building can be covered by a sign. I think we do have to recognize, we have a lot of strip malls and maybe it comes from that individual tenant space and that percentage of the tenant space versus the overall structure. I think that needs to be called out because it's gonna, one strip mall could use the whole front of all their space in one section.
Yep, and we have, that exact question has been asked of a strip mall, is, it says 20%. Does that just mean if I get my application in first, that somebody else can't do a sign?
But I think, I think it needs to be of your tenant space, of your front tenant space or your exposed space.
That's how I was interpreting.
That's how I would interpret it too, but I think we need to call it out.
Sure, yep.
At least that's my hope, is how we're interpreting it. But I think that'll change the wording in a couple of the tables.
Yep, I think you're right. I think that's everything. Good.
So next steps is getting, can we get something prior to like Packet Day on this? Like, even, like, beginning of that week, just on this piece? So we have more time and we can hopefully move it forward? Is it most helpful to get it in the form of the packet? Or is it, you wanna see crossed out language? Or what's the most helpful for people when looking at this? What she just showed us.
Red lines are helpful. I can drop comments and...
Yeah.
Yep.
And I guess if it, so then this will get posted in next month's packet, so if there's public comment, they can, they can read what we're seeing.
Is there any, um, anything in here which I easily could have missed it, but, um, people hold signs?
I don't know that there's anything in there about that.
Cause you see them on Mike and Union Intersects. Do we, do we need to, I don't wanna make a big deal out of it, but...
Like hand-handling signs or like businesses that have like the...
The businesses that...
Yeah.
Liberty text.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, right.
That's not crazy to talk about. How do we feel about that?
I mean, I don't know if it's ever gotten out of hand. I haven't really seen that, but...
There's the fight once or two. I'm just kidding, that's never happened.
You are on video.
Uh, yeah, I...
Yeah.
As far, as long as I've been involved, there's never been, but we also don't have a ton of them popping up.
No, it's not like up in Fargo where there's always a furniture store that's always going out of business. Yeah.
That is a great point, though. I mean, you, you see those closeout signs that happen where they'll, they'll do it for, you know, eight weeks in a row.
The fireworks people normally, we'll probably see them in the next two weeks out by Walmart, I would guess. They normally have people standing out there.
Commercial. I mean, that's the, that's what we're talking about, so that should probably be addressed. A sign's a sign, I think.
So what we do say in our code is that you can't advertise for your business off of the site of your business? Is, is that what they're doing? I mean...
Well, to me, yeah, and they're on public property doing it.
So, we don't want them?
Well, we want them permitted.
Right. Uh, can we look into if how some other towns have handled this? I mean, not that we have to car, I'm not for cookie cutter stuff, but, I mean, can we just see if anyone's actually come down on this?
I will try to figure out.
Or if League of Cities has any wordage that maybe we, I mean, League of Cities do any of this kinda stuff?
They, so they don't have, they don't, not, I mean, about a lot of this. They are the ones who suggested the Hopkins one as something to use because they don't have language.
So do we see, we wanna allow it, we wanna allow it with a permit, we want some, what, what are the parameters?
Oh, I, I see a safety...
Starting at nothing here.
Yeah, I see safety as a, sometimes a concern.
Yeah, like when they're, they've a couple times been down at Union and Lincoln and it's hard to, I mean, when they're right there, there's a lot going on at that intersection.
When you have young drivers that are, well, young and old, doesn't matter what, what the driver is.
You have drivers.
Drivers, yep. And, you know, you got the rubberneckers that are all of a sudden, you know, they, they turn and hit their head, you know?
There has to be a better term for this, what I have written down now, a spinning person signage? That's not...
That's a good title for a variant or an ordinance. Yeah, that's good.
I think that's the proper terminology. I'd put that in there.
Or handheld signs.
Handheld signs or, or body signs, cause that's the other thing. It's not just handheld, it's where they're wearing like this three-sided triangle.
Yeah, ma- maybe just do some research and see what you can come up with. And, and it'd be, it'd be commercial and then I think there's an onsite and offsite piece of that. You know, like the firework people, I think, are on their own
Probably.
site, probably, so...
I would hope, yeah.
Okay. I will look into that.
And if you wanna permit the homeless people signs too, that'd be great. What do you think?
I know.
I have a question, okay. Does our current sign ordinance require a permit for every type of sign? No, but isn't, it doesn't. I think this is what Hopkins is, isn't Hopkins saying you do need a permit for every type of sign?
They have a lot more permits than we've had.
Yeah, and they, their section on, like, what's unauthorized signage was longer than what we're leaving it at.
Yeah, that was multiple pa, I mean, that was long. So are you thinking we should have more permitting, less permitting? Where, what?
I'm just saying, to put up any type of sign, if it shows up in the ordinance, you need a, you need to go in and put in an application and then get a permit back? Is that how our current ordinance is set up? Uh, when I...
Business ones, yes.
I'm looking at, so I'm looking at page six and I'm happy to be told wrong here, I hope I am, but it says that, you know, no signs shall be erected, altered, reconstruct, reconstructed, maintained, or moved in the city without first securing a permit from the city. I, I mean, that's...
And that, that's kinda where I was getting at with the whole nonprofit thing. Like, we're gonna have people getting permits for everything.
Like, I'm wondering if you can still regulate that conduct without requiring a permit by just saying that...
But I think where this is coming from, excuse my interruption, that we have signed per, the signed companies have the sign installed and they haven't even submitted an application to us yet. So that's where I believe the must-have-a-permit-in-hand is kinda coming from, to curtail that activity.
And I would say that the section, like, if we wanna be very clear that if you're putting up a nonprofit sign in your own yard for two weeks, something like that, the exceptions section would be the right place to say.
I agree.
Here's where you don't need a permit.
I agree.
Okay.
I think we need to call that out.
Yeah, and continue to think about that.
Okay.
Depending on the sign.
Cause our exceptions, I don't remember where it is, I'm sorry. The exceptions section is really short right now.
Yeah, and I think you could, I think we could expand that exception section a little bit and then point people towards that when they're asking on nonprofit stuff.
Exemptions, I'm sorry. The language is exemptions. Yeah. Well, and maybe that's what Hopkins is trying to do here when it says signs six square feet or less in size.
That's why I was wondering about the size being a little bigger. I know you were going the other way in your head, but that's the direction, when I asked that, I was going. And maybe there's a nonprofit size that's different in that.
Could be.
Nonprofit slash community activity difference versus a for-profit activity. Okay, so now, I, this is gonna sound awful, but I know the Journal's gonna pick up on any talk of signs and it'll be, which is fine. But what are we doing about garage sale signs? Because that's the whole, I mean, that has been 10 years of talk in this town.
You may put a garage sale sign on private property. Do not put it in the right of way.
So we're leaving that, we're leaving that alone? That's what everybody wants to do? Cause I'm just like, I, and I'm not saying that that's wrong, I'm just saying, that's the part of this people are gonna pay attention to.
Yeah, and we don't really even discuss garage sale signs in this world.
No.
Residential, it would be like a sale sign, essentially, is how I think we would cover it. But again, it's not supposed to be in the right of way.
Right, so like, that's, that's what I'm like saying, like, are we, are we fine with that?
I feel like it's a win if people know what they should be doing with respect to garage sale signs and they're doing it and it, it just makes sense from, you know, how it works.
Cause they're still doing it on the darn boulevards.
Yeah, I think it gets to an...
Based on that, um, the city council, basically, you're, you're right, it's a hot...
Yeah, it is, and I just, I just know what we're talking about signs. Yeah.
Um, obviously Anthony Hicks, City Council. Um, obviously the garage sign, the garage sale, probably sale signs kind of came in because there was, they were everywhere. They, they grew, um, you know, you, you, and so basically then, the city, um, we, we obviously had an ordinance about signs and then obviously personally, it's like, if we have an ordinance and that, you know, and it says you shouldn't put a sign in the city right of way, then it's like city staff need to go and pick it up. And, and then, you know, and so that's what we were doing. And then literally, we were collecting more signs than, you know, you could obviously cope with. And so basically, they pretty much kind of agreed, I don't think it's written, that it was more of a kind of, obviously, a gentle person's agreement that as long as they were removed after the weekend, you know, if you like, if you take the corner of, of Lincoln and Broadway, you know, there's a plethora of kind of signs accumulate there. And as long as they get removed, kind of like by, by Monday morning, the city wasn't going to spend time and money going and picking them up.
See, to me, thank you for that. To me, let's just call it out then that that's our policy.
Yeah, and, and that, and that would be, they could be within that, but the, the challenge, of course, is the reason that we don't want them in there is because of vision.
Right, it's right away.
If you get a collective amount of signs on a, on a busy corner, then obviously, you know, you're, you're a belligerent, the vision of the drivers.
I just, it's not good in my mind to pick and choose what parts of stuff you're enforcing.
Right.
And so if we're gonna be not enforcing it, which if that's where city council's at, so be it.
Yeah.
Maybe, I mean, I think that's town-friendly, but then do we call it out as residential sales can have signs of up to, you know, two by three, whatever the standard size is, it must be removed by the end of the, by Monday at noon?
Yeah.
And just call it out? I mean, I'm just, like, if that's what council's doing, to me...
So that, yeah.
I, I'm just saying, it doesn't make sense to not address it because I know it's what, the only part anyone's gonna wanna talk about, about this whole thing.
So that's not codified anywhere, that, how they're supposed to?
I don't know whether it is.
Can we look into that? If it is written? I don't think it's ever been changed.
Somewhere, but it's not, I don't know whether it was...
When was it?
Oh, probably before your time.
That's back from Mark Sievert was here.
Okay, that's why I don't know about it.
I'm just, I just, to me, that's, it's just, there've been so many newspaper articles and comments, I mean, garage sale signs are just like a thing in this town.
If you're in the wrath of a certain group of kind of leaders, then start talking about yard signs and remove them, you know, garage, garage signs. We had a group of them, I mean, there was a force of nature came into the council meeting.
To say that they want garage sale signs?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You were taking...
It was a huge thing. You were helping in college.
And I know people who would fight to say no garage sale signs, they don't want them anywhere near their property. They think they're terrible.
It's a birthright to have permit sales signs.
When we were doing, we had a plethora of signs down in the lower garage.
They see it as economic development and people coming in and the older people, they, they don't use their phone and so they want to see the neon green sign that says, you know...
Yeah. Four twenty-four.
So I'm just, I, I'm not taking a position on it, I'm just saying, if they're not removing them, let's write down what the policy is and then enforce that policy.
Yeah.
Without permit?
Right, without a permit.
That's the thing with like keeping these temporary signs saying two weeks. It's like, if you're gonna say two weeks, then how are we gonna enforce it?
Yeah, right.
Yep, and that's where, you know, you can consume a lot of staff time in basically picking up signs.
Well, I think the reality is the only way it's gonna get enforced, like a lot of our ordinances, is if someone complains.
Yeah, it's a neighbor saying...
I mean, that's, that's the bottom line.
If the event is done, why isn't this set down?
Yep.
Yeah, and that's what I would say, like, it says signs six, six square feet, that's, that's three by two.
It's not big.
I mean, if my neighbor has a sign that's like eight by four in their yard, I mean, I would care, actually.
You would care?
Yeah, I would care. I wouldn't want an eight by four sign in my neighbor's yard.
Three, three by, uh, two, uh, real, real estate signs generally two wide, three high.
I would think something like that, yeah.
Kind of, you know, but you get bigger than that, that's a big sign.
But I think the option or the ability to enforce needs to be there.
I do, I agree.
But I think it's how you enforce it.
Right.
That's, that's...
And just if they're not removing the garage sale signs, to me, we have to write what the policy actually is.
I think the longest garage sales that you typically see are Thursday through...
Thursday through Saturday.
And, and maybe even a Sunday.
Depending if you... Depending if you get rained on on Saturday, probably.
So, I'd say four days max, must be cleared by Sunday, five o'clock. If not, impose a fine, I don't know.
And I think it has to be for, I, I mean, either nonprofit or residential purposes. You know what I mean? Like, you can't all of a sudden have a garage sale at Slumberland.
Right.
Yeah, so, so do we need to just, so first of all, I, I don't know the answer to this, is there, is there an ordinance somewhere that regulates garage sales? Because it seems like, okay, so it seems like this is like a-
Oh, three a year, I think, or something like that. Three within a 12 month period. Three within a 12 month period, I think.
Yeah.
Well, I know a couple houses that ruin that one.
Yeah, I think it's three within a 12 month period. Or there's some houses that have. But I don't think we're enforcing that either.
No.
Like, you're right, it's three a year.
Okay, I think we're gonna, I'm getting questions about how long Lot Switz is gonna take. Can we bounce that to next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mark, are you okay?
That's fine, if anybody has questions, you feel free to give me a call during the day.
Okay.
And I'll try to answer it that way.
So I think what we'll do with Lot Switz for Jill for the, let's, next month, we'll do discussion on it, we won't take action on it, but we'll review it all next month. And then, that way, then everybody can understand what we're reading, and come back then in August, probably. Does that make sense to everybody? I just, I kind of feel like we have to get these signs nailed down, and not have two huge things going at one time? Is, that's the feeling I'm getting in the room.
I'm thinking of like nailing up a sign, you should nail it down too.
Oh, um, yeah, while she's looking for that, Lori, we're gonna let public, if anyone in the room would like to speak, Lori, if you'd like to speak. Just state your name and address.
Yeah, Lori Mullin, twenty forty Liquid Drive, and I lost track of what item it was that I was-
Sorry.
In this packet, but it had to do with, I guess what my reference point is, is the downtown, I'm on the downtown council, and we're talking about how we bring businesses to the downtown Philly storefronts and make the downtown inviting. Some of these storefronts do not look inviting. When you have the entire window done up in a window cling, and they're done from the inside. We have, we've seen shower curtains taped to the inside of windows, we've got curtains that are pulled.
So are you recommending interior signage or window signage be professional window signage? Or window coverings, or what are you saying?
It said that, you know, initially, it said one third of the window. Okay, so downtown Minneapolis is redoing, they've hired consultants to look at all the storefronts and make that more inviting. I guarantee you, they don't have window clings taking up an entire window. I guarantee you that.
Where we're gonna have issues is we have businesses that are already doing it.
Well, and that's fine, that's fine. Let them be grandfathered in, but as we're, we're bringing in new storefronts, new businesses, let's be looking at something that's got some design standards to it. Because if we've got things where we've got blue insulated foam in the windows, we've got shower curtains, okay, if they're grandfathered in, that's fine.
So are they, are they signs, or are they just window coverings?
Window coverings.
Okay.
Or signs, there are signs too.
So I think what we're dealing with is probably just the sign part right now.
Well, and there's signs too that are, are-
That are not good.
Yeah, I mean, then they might as well just block up their entire storefront, because it doesn't look inviting. Can you imagine if every storefront had a solid window cling on it?
So that's something, I know Nate feels pretty, I know Nate feels pretty strongly about that one, so I think we need to bring that back as a discussion point next month? Just respecting the fact that he was pretty firm on that.
You know, and none of you are, are, you know, professionals in the design standard, neither am I. But I know that it doesn't look good. And let's, let's take a look between now and then at what Minneapolis is doing for their downtown storefronts.
So I guess if we can pull up Minneapolis's on their window signage at some point? Do you have any other comments?
It was very disappointing that this wasn't, this packet wasn't online. You have one meeting a month.
I'll take the blame for that, I-
Well, and, and the commissioners should be looking at this as well.
Well, they receive it by email, they don't have to look for it.
Well, I'm just putting them on notice that they should. And the other thing is that the last meeting, there was additional supportive, supporting documents that was handed out, and it was, you had asked if that was gonna be put online and updated, and that wasn't.
Okay, from the last, the last packet?
Yes.
So we can get that packet updated online, right?
Yes, which-
So market information that he passed out, there was the letter from the farmer's market.
Oh, that went to the commissioners, okay.
And you would ask that that be, yeah, because how does anyone, you know, go and make reference to this material afterwards, and it's not, not accurate?
That would be, so like, that letter would be included with the minutes, which were approved at this meeting. So the minutes from the last meeting, and then they get updated after that.
Well, she'd asked that it be updated at that point, because when the city council goes to look at this, I don't know that they don't get the minutes, do they, until now?
Um, I'm not sure when they get the minutes.
We only get them, if this, like, like this application for variance will be in the packet, but the minutes aren't, you know, like that.
So you didn't know you'd still get something out? So you didn't get the information on farmer's markets, and so you're getting that tonight, then any updated minutes?
So-
Okay.
So, like, the farmer's market letter, that would be, is that, I don't even, we approved these minutes, but I guess I didn't pay attention to if that letter was there. So is that letter in our minutes from last month?
And was Mark's added information put in there too?
So I guess if, maybe we should just include in our minutes, I, I don't know, and we have two city council members here. If we have additional information, do you guys get our packets, or what do you guys get?
We only get the packet if we look for it. We don't get, I mean, like, if there's something on a council agenda that, like, for example, the discussion obviously last month was about the requirement or the request-
Yeah.
To the kitchen.
Yeah.
And that kind of was, that gets put in our packet.
So is it helpful to the two of you to get our, or not to the two of you, but to the council, in your guys' perspective, would it be helpful to have our whole packet?
If, if-
Well, and Lynn had actually told me that you did get the packet, but it sounds like you don't have a packet?
No, you, we, like, for example, like, this kind of like variance, this will be in our packet this second.
That section would be, okay. So maybe it's something where, can council just get our packets?
Yeah, I thought they did.
Right, so here, and we're just clarifying, yep, we can get them the packets, and then if there's additional material provided, Jill, can we just include them in our minutes for the next meeting, and then that way everyone, because it probably is a good thing, like, that letter from the farmer's market that went to everybody, we probably should have official record of that.
Yeah.
And so, that's all fine, we can, we will get that addressed.
Yeah.
And nothing, nothing with the, the agenda not being on in the packet being on, I mean, it just truly was an oversight, there was nobody, I mean, no ulterior motive.
It, it has happened before, though. It has happened before, where the planning commission missed posting the packet, and I don't know if it was under you or whoever. But I, I know that has happened. And so, just make sure that it is, it's hard for people to come and respond to anything if they haven't seen it. And if they're handed the packet when they come in, I didn't have time to read through this.
Yeah, and that's part of why tonight, we are not taking any action on the items, because they weren't publicly, even though legally we could have.
No, I get that.
We're just respecting the process that we're not going to.
I guess, another comment, I would, I would urge that you suggest to the council to mail the farmer's market out and getting a sign put up, whether that's at the library or at Lake Region. I mean, their, their season has already started. To not issue them a permit when they come in, with not giving them any forewarning that this was coming, wasn't, wasn't fair to them. And especially when we had asked-
I think there's a misunderstanding about when they came in looking for their permit, they are still eligible for their permit. And I believe Lynn may have misspoken when she told them they could not have a permit because this discussion was taking place. They're still eligible for a permit under our old rules. But our old rules state that they need to either have their signage in specific places, or work with a private location to put up the sign.
Yeah, and, and maybe that's, maybe that's what it says, but if they've been putting it in the same place for how many years, and it was really the city of Fergus Falls that encouraged them to come downtown, it's like, let's help them out now without making this too difficult.
Well, and I think if, if, if they're still wanting a different solution, I think they've gotta talk to their council members. That would be, you know, I mean, like, our hands are somewhat tied. You know, you know what I mean? Like, unfortunately, instead of, we don't direct the city council, the city council directs us in some ways, just like the higher hierarchy.
You do make recommendations.
Right, and so I mean-
And same with, you know, Triangle Park and the black signs and, you know, letting them be more than two signs.
So I think, so with two city council members here, can you be aware that there's a farmer's market signing question? And if that needs to get advanced through staff or through council, then that can be handled that way? Does that seem like a fair approach? Because, I mean, everyone wants the farmer's market to succeed, it's just a matter of what we do for one group, some other group might ask for two. And it's just a matter of with, if there's some grandfathering process that they can find an exception, that's beyond us.
Well, and I understand that, it was that they've been doing it this way for how many years, and then to be told that they're not being permitted is, I mean, I think that that is what they're understanding.
Go ahead, Laura.
Can we make sure that all the council members get that letter, because we are being late saying warnings, so can we all have that in an email?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I, I guess I wouldn't say with Triangle Park, with things happening this summer, that if they're only letting two, two signs be permitted there, you know, we want things to come to town, and we want to be advertising that. I think that, that should be addressed now.
So Claire, do you have, do you have stuff on that?
You know, the sign ordinance-
Do you have garage sale stuff? Okay, so, and that's something, and maybe the city council, when this comes to them, and, because of the wording that we're looking at is administratively, it'll be decided how many go there? So that, that can be worked up between city council members and administration, in my mind, and we don't have to put a number to that. Okay, you wanna go?
Sure, so going back to the garage sale section, so it's one, one eighteen point oh two restrictions and provisions. And it does say you can only have, there's no more than four garage and garage sales, and then any related signage shall be limited to the premises and other residential property provided permission from property owners is obtained and shall be removed at termination of sale. And then signs shall be limited to four square feet. So, if we do make changes to signage there, then we'll just have to also update-
That's what I was gonna say, can we just update that?
Well, how do we feel about that? Is that, I mean, because that's, again, not putting it in right of way, it does not say that's okay.
I think we need, if, if they're not gonna pull them from the right of way, I think we have to allow them in the, you know, I think we have to call it out. If, if the city council direction has been, and we can verify that maybe, I think we need to verify that that's where we're at. I just, I think if that's, if that's the direction the city council's taking, we need to match it. Is my personal. Do others feel differently? No?
It's a bit like election sites. It's for a period of time, and it's how much, how much staff time do you wanna spend going and pulling, you know, a small sign that's kind of-
Well, I mean, the other, this is crazy, but if you pull us, if you don't have it gone by Monday, and it gets pulled, then you get $10 fine added to your utility bill. They have your address. I mean, there's a way to be creative about it. If you're not gonna follow the rules, then you've got $10 added to your water bill.
And that, the road fund.
Sure, right. But I'm just saying, I mean, I think there's a way to do things where if people aren't following the rules, there's some enforcement.
You won't get any other funding. I want to adopt a model.
Adopt a model. Okay. Okay, so are we all signed out? Are we feeling, where are we feeling on this? Okay.
I, I think just maybe toy with the exemptions. That's where we can get into non-commercial signs, and that's, you know, or signs authorized, garage sale signs authorized by whatever ordinance or whatever, you know, I hate looking into different things, but I, I think we just probably need more exemptions to deal with this stuff.
Yep.
I, I, again, I think commercial, like, like a banner is really, really is a sign, you know, but a graduation banner for someone's graduation in your yard is not what we're, I think, going after.
Yeah, the happy birthday letters across your front yard, we don't care.
Don't permit that.
No. No. Okay, so I think based on the fact that everyone's slowly dying that we're still here, based on the looks I'm getting, we're gonna jump to council update, and we're gonna talk a little bit about CBD, because that's important, and not that everything else isn't, but I think we're gonna do that just for the sake of everyone's gonna sleep in their own beds tonight.
Well, and this is just a very quick update, letting you guys know that city council on Wednesday morning will be discussing the code that was passed back in twenty twenty late, or twenty twenty-two regarding zoning of hemp manufacturing specifically, and what that looks like in business zones. Right now, we allow it by CUP. They'd like to look at that again and potentially make some changes. And since we do have two council members, if you want to talk about it at all, you're welcome to. Otherwise, we'll just update at the next meeting how that conversation-
So are we in a moratorium at this point, or no?
Not at this point. That is also being discussed based on the changes to legalization, so that's, I mean, that'll be a separate issue that this group is also probably gonna need to start looking at. That's why at the last meeting, we discussed doing a subcommittee to meet. I think we should still do that to start talking about the zoning, because that's one of the ways that a city can regulate with the new changes that are coming.
If they're talking about the manufacturing on Wednesday morning, can we get some direction for where the appetite of the council is, so that subcommittee is not wasting time where we end up then coming up with something that is nowhere near the appetite of that group?
Would you feel comfortable doing that before the discussion, or?
I think, I think, I, I kind of ran a lot, in, in my group, there's like HF one hundred, and then there's also a one sheet on CBD. Like this one, this one, there's more in there. This one was about, obviously, specifically the manufacturing. And there's quite a lot of, like, rules in terms of, and that's where I think it's, that's where I'm coming from, is that I think, you know, a blanket kind of conditional use permit, if there are also rules that are associated with, with it, those need to be kind of part of, part and parcel, because, you know, somebody manufacturing, you know, gummies, like, was proposed, there is, you know, it specifically calls out in here, a statement that the product does not claim or diagnose cream and blah, 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 but there's also somewhere, avoid cross comment, con, cross contact with food allergens, and licensed food premises operators must ensure hemp derived cannibid does not transfer to regulated food products. And I think, you know, when you obviously cook hemp, there is a residual smell. And, you know, how, how, how are you going to get rid of that smell, so that when somebody comes in to eat their pizza or have their toast, there isn't that residual smell? And I think that's where, I think the general consensus was, that how do we kind of put those rules that apply to manufacturing within kind of like the conditional use permit, so that they become part and parcel of, of that conditional use permit? And then HF one hundred is, there's forty-six pages of it, and it needs a lot of clarification. I think there's a lot of ambiguous terminology in there that's open-ended at this point in time, just because this body hasn't been formed yet on how to actually interpret the rules and devise the rules, because there are really no rules as such, it's just language at this point in time. And that's the moratorium that the city is putting in place is based on HF one hundred. But existing businesses like Sugar High and Elevate, I mean, there's, we're not stopping them, they will continue to operate in the form- But existing businesses like Sugar High and Elevate, I mean, there, there's, we're not stopping them. They will continue to operate in the form that they do. It's just the marijuana piece of it that's in HF, HF one hundred. And I think what the city council is looking for is how do we, you know, have a, a business like that? Not in a more general public area, you know, so if, if this kitchen was in like Sugar High's dispensary? And it was in their, their business premise, I think nobody would, would, you know, would sort of have any resistance to it. But I think it was the fact that it was a third-party premises to their normal business place was what obviously, you know, where people kind of had some reservations about. Do we, do we give this or we don't, we can give that. And it was avoided because Emily found a different place of manufacturing. But I think that's kind of where that discussion's coming from.
So recognizing, we talked in circles about this whole process.
Yeah.
And none of us are CBD experts.
Correct.
And so it's very hard for this group, and I don't wanna speak for others, but it's very hard for this group to say this is what we recommend. Because we're coming at this very naively.
As, the same as we are. And that's, and I think that's where it's like, how do we tie the two together and still make sense, but allow people to operate?
Yeah, we wanna be business friendly within reason.
Yeah. But I think this was the fact that it was kind of cohabitating with other businesses.
So the subcommittee, you think should be a go from a council perspective?
Oh, and I, I think it will. I think it will.
I, yeah, I think there are broader zoning questions to look at. And then like this, I mean, with this specific.
Yeah.
Example where we had the CUP, I mean, that's, this is exactly what a conditional use permit is for.
Yeah.
Is you then get to place the conditions.
Yeah.
That you think are, are necessary. And I think that would have been the step that council would have taken had this process continued, is to say.
We will allow this with.
Operate, but yes, you must do X, Y, Z in order for us to be comfortable with that.
Placeman error or something. I mean, like different options.
Yeah. So we'll see how the conversation on Wednesday morning goes and what the decision is, but the mechanism is there to put those rules in place.
Right. So I mean, any direction the council can give, I think is helpful. So then we're not just going in circles where we think one thing, they think another thing, and we just kinda keep redoing all of it.
Well, and maybe, I mean, maybe the subcommittee includes a member of the council.
Two members of council or something, yeah.
I don't, yeah.
I don't know, but then you have to make sure that the people that then you're getting are a fair representation of where the council, you know what I mean? That's hard too right now.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
I, I think because you say we, we need to be business friendly, we just have to tie things together so that they make sense for all parties.
Right.
I, I, I mean, I look at it, it's like, if we don't allow it in Fergus, then Alex will or kind of, you know, some, someone will. And so it's going to get sold and it's gonna get brought to Fergus whether we participate or we don't.
Right.
So we might as well take the revenue and have the retail store here.
Okay, so you're gonna let people know when we're trying to get that group together?
Yeah, so we still only have two people identified and we don't have a date identified to meet at this point, but if anybody.
Huh? Who are the two people?
It was you and it was Sarah.
And I, I, I like half raised my hand to be the third. I half raised my hand. Are you still looking for a third?
I think a third would be great.
That's great.
Put me on it.
And if anyone wants my place, you can have. So, I'm dying to do that. Um, okay, so you'll just kinda let, put, send some dates out once council's done their thing Wednesday and we have some idea of where we're going?
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Okay. Are you gonna still talk to us, being that we kinda bounced your whole topic? You gonna still be okay with all of us that we're not listening to your presentation?
It's fine.
Okay, okay. Okay, so do you have anything else?
I don't think so. I think that's everything.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Perfect, we're already here by seven, guys.
Thank you. This was a lot of, a lot of discussion.